Time to look at the bills and so forth, and are you tape and dance? Ah. I saw the cameras there, but I wondered if we had--
I'm Jerry Olson.
If we had a ghost to some of those. So, let's say this. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice-- Okay. But he always has to remind you, but, oh, what's the open meeting act? Did we-- It's there, okay. Open meeting act, and we will take a roll, I wish we could get that. I just start. Don--
You're there.
Are you ready?
Yep.
And James--
Here.
Don, or, excuse me, I'm going the other way.
Bob--
Here.
And Larry.
Here.
Okay. So, is everybody present? First thing on the agenda is the approval of the October 11th minutes. And then there was the special council meeting, the 31st. There was a revision of the minutes for October 4th. So, those are all in your packet. October 11th was the full meeting that we had for October 11th. I think you saw that film, right? So, you guys all had these, so. And then, and I want you to draw your attention to the October 4th. This was the meeting in which I asked you to please approve Donna as our new clerk. And in the original statement, the council wanted to make sure that-- that it was understood that whoever came in with the next group of people sworn in would have the right to choose that person in that position. And I made the remark that, just wanted to remind him that by statute, the mayor appoints all of those people, chairs, the attorneys, the engineers, all of those people that are those extended lawyers, everybody. So, that's not an issue. But somehow, in the writing of the minutes, that came up that-- to hire without the board's consent. That was not the intention of that statement. It just means they have the right to name them, make their own nominations or their naming. They get to name them, then they always go to the board for approval. So, all we did on that-- on the revised, when we should have a copy of that, and she marked those original and revised. Just changed that to say at the time, reminded the council that the authority-- the mayor has the authority through city and state extension to hire with the council's consent, as it were, to clerk treasuries. Just made that little quick revision. So, I'm gonna ask for an approval of that one independently. If I could get a motion for that.
October 4th meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve October 4th minute.
So, revise, the revised copy. Yeah. James makes the motion to accept the revised.
I'll second.
Seconded by Don, roll call vote by Bob--
Yes.
Larry--
Yes.
Don--
Yes.
And James. Okay, so then the minutes for the October, or the statement or October 11th meeting. This was the full meeting, I believe. Yes.
The regular.
And the regular meeting, yes. And that's the one that has all the claims listed at the bottom and so forth. It was a fairly short meeting. So, if you've read those and approved of those, we can ask for the approval of the October 11th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 11th city council meeting.
Okay, so Bob has a motion that second.
October 2nd.
James and Paul will go, Larry--
Yes.
Don--
Yes.
James--
Yes.
And-- Who did I miss?
Bob.
Bob.
Yes.
And then the 31st meeting, Monday, the 31st. So, anybody wanna make a motion for that one? James, you were absent, right?
I was absent.
I was absent, so I can't attest to any of this.
I'll make a motion to approve the October 31st special meeting.
So, motion by Bob--
I'll second.
Second by Larry. Voting Larry.
Yes.
Don--
Yes.
James--
Yes.
And Bob. The September 29th heading is a planning and zoning thing, which John is gonna talk to us about. And in the meantime, before we get into those, 'cause we've got a couple things to do, if I'm zoning, like us to look at-- with your permission-- All right, Ryan's not here. Is Brett here? Yeah. Let's jump ahead to the petitions of the public. Erin, would you like to talk to it?
Always. So, I'm here as a member of the Board of Directors of Main Street Treasures. As people know, Main Street Treasures is a thrift store. We're operated by volunteers. We take donated items from the public and we sell them for a profit, and then that profit is donated back to the community. And a couple items that had been on our bucket list for a few years now, we think it's about time that we go forward with them, and we've got the money, and we might not have time to get them done in 2022, but we sure like to pledge them in 2022 and move forward as soon as the contractors have time to move forward with them. So, the first one that we had was the entryway of this building, so that entry hallway. I don't know if you've looked in there, the flooring is in pretty bad shape. The flooring here has held up really well. When we talked to the flooring person, she thought it might have been because of wet carpets and just the higher traffic, more concentration through there, that's caused that to come up. And so, we quoted to have that replaced with a-- it's a vinyl, it's a higher quality commercial vinyl plank flooring. And so, it would come just to the threshold here, the entryway there. And then also, we got a quote to do the bar area, 'cause that room could be really a nice room, and it would clean up better, because in there is just concrete, the flooring there.
And the floor is in not too good shape.
No, and the concrete itself is not in great shape, but-- So, those two areas, we got quotes, and Main Street Treasures will pay for it, so it's not something you guys have to do. But we didn't think we should start digging into the floor without the council's approval. And so, that was the first thing that we wanted to do. And then, the second thing was, oh, about six years ago, I think, we donated Christmas decorations for the poles on the downtown area. And they're still in pretty good shape, and I think Patrick said that there's a few extras if we knew we need to replace a couple of them, 'cause the wind last year kinda got some of our banners. But it's a shame that the poles look as rough as they look. And talking to a painting contractor, he's pretty sure that he painted them last and that it was at least 25 years ago. So, it's time. And so, we did get a quote to paint those, and we were hoping to go with black or dark green, that dark green color that a lot of cities use. The contractor thought that that holds up better. If it chips and rust, it doesn't show as well as the white shows. And so, they quoted us that, and again, we don't wanna start digging into city property without permission. So, we were wondering if we could pay for that for you guys and line up contractors. And that one, if the weather is good, they could possibly get it done, you know, before the end of the year, but I wouldn't count on it, so.
I got a question.
Yep.
You talked to a painting contractor, right?
Yes, yep.
What did he say about, do we have to rough up the surface on this existing paint so the new paint would--
It would be--
And here, or sandblast them off, or what?
Yep, yep. And he even said that if we wanted to, they could start the prep work now and not paint until the spring, depending on how--
I don't know how many coats of paint that and poles I've had on it either.
Yeah.
You have to chip and see how many layers we'd have on there.
Yeah, yeah. And like I said, he's-- it was them that did it 25 years ago, so they are familiar with them. He said, they know a lot of cities' poles, a lot of cities, every tank there's. So--
Who is that, Erin? Who is that painter?
It's Miller Paint.
Miller, is he the one that does that?
Okay.
Awesome. My recommendation is--
Need a motion for that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve. What is--
If they're gonna pay for it and arrange it, let them do it.
Yeah, yeah. Make a motion.
I'll second.
Whatever they want to.
So--
Larry?
I'll second.
Motion by James, second by Larry. And we'll start with Don.
Yes.
And James.
Yes.
And Bob.
Yes.
And Larry.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Thank you.
And she was saying, you guys were here with different samples, right?
Oh, yeah.
Did you come up with something?
Yeah, we found, we found a color that will kinda hide some dirt a little bit or stuffs, but it coordinates well with this. It's not gonna match this at all.
Sure.
But it coordinates well. It's got a smooth surface, so it'll clean up well.
Is that the planks, or is it just an overlay?
It's a vinyl plank.
Yeah, it's a plank, yeah, okay. That's what we put in the entryway.
Yes, yep.
And by the way, many of you have not been into the office to see the raised floor and the cop shop and the entryway through it, which looks pretty good. I'm proud of our new windows and our new kitchen, and so, all of these things help, and we appreciate it, Erin, thank you. So, then the next thing is, are we gonna let all this get torn up when Brett brings the little restrooms in?
Just so you know, we did talk to them, so, you know, we're gonna have to coordinate well, because if you have a Santa Day, for example, we don't want that torn up during Santa Day, or if there's someone's wedding, so they--
Exactly.
They're not just gonna show up just because you got--
Most of those are in a book, and you can check that book anytime, Erin. And they have already, I mean, December's already got a lot booked.
Yep. So, it's probably not gonna be--
Yep, absolutely.
We just wanted to let it this year.
Good. You've got the board.
My name is Brett Schmidt. I am a board member for the Crofton Bloomfield Youth Wrestling Club. I'm petitioning the board to allow us use of the auditorium for practice purposes from basically the months of December until end of March. We are a-- we actually are a consolidated club, so it's Crofton Bloomfield. We run about 40 to 50 youth from pre-K through eighth grade. Most years in the past, we've cooperated with high school and kind of tried to follow high school practices around. Maybe most of you don't know, it's been a varsity sport in Crofton for 20, almost 25 years now. We have no designated practice areas. High school doesn't either. We kind of float between whatever openings that we can get at usually either Crofton High School or Bloomfield Elementary or High School there. It's just become more difficult over the last couple of years to be able to work with the high school's practices, 'cause there's this fairly erratic, and we're trying to plan pickups and drop-offs by parents and small children and stuff. And so, we try and have a set schedule that's not changing, like the schools does with weather and other programs. So, I'm basically petitioning for us to be able to have access and use to the auditorium. We practice twice a week. We rotate every other week between Crofton and Bloomfield, so that we service both communities, so that both sets of parents are able to have a close practice and a practice that they have to drive for. It's usually a Tuesday, Thursday. We usually don't start practices till 6:30 at night. We run for about two to two and a half hours. During that time period, like I said, there's usually three coaches, up to 50 kids, and then 20, 30 parents that rotate through. In years past, we've had to use the commons of high school, if anyone knows what that's like. It's mats wall, wall, edge to edge, and not necessarily the safest place to practice, with lots of hard surfaces on the edges, no mat, foam, any of that. So, we'd like to be able to spread out a little bit. That's kind of where the auditorium here came up. We've been in multiple different places over the last probably 10 years. Constance School, like I said, the elementary, the high school, Bloomfield High School. Never had a--
Above the sports--
Above the sports stop, Dan's Lounge, you name it, we've been everywhere. Just to kind of try and fit in with what we can. As everyone knows, youth sports are just blown up in the last 10 years on it. Our gyms are booked from as soon as seconds school gets out until nine o'clock at night.
How much, how much room would you need, Brett? If you're gonna be in here, you'd need the whole area.
When we're practicing, it would probably be, well, it's 40 foot, and if we did a mat with a couple edge protectors, so that we're not wrestling out on the edge, it'd probably be like a 40 by--
Okay, so, most of that?
Be most of this.
Could you then store those for daytime activities and so?
We would like to be able to store them up on the stage or out of the way. That's kind of the issue with us in some, like, let's just say St. Rose's Parish Hall, which we've tried before. There's so many activities in there, and there's no place to store them out of the way, that basically, we have to roll them up, put them in a trailer every single night, bring them in, roll them out, clean them at the end of the night, roll them up, put them in a trailer. The mats, there's seven section mats that are usually about six foot tall.
Is there room up there?
There is room up there.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Patrick, we don't have that much going on on that stage very rarely.
Rarely.
Very rarely. Usually things like a veterans program or something like that is about the only time. I don't see a problem with that, honestly.
And basically, what it would be is, I'm, like I said, I'm one of the board members, I'm kind of the administrator. We carry our own liability insurance, USA Wrestling, so we have $100,000 general liability insurance that's covered underneath of us. And how we've done it before in the past, when we've either had use or leased a space, you know, I will sign out a key, I take responsibility for it. If, if there's nothing going on, like I said, our practices are Tuesdays and Thursdays, so if there's nothing going on on a Wednesday, if I leave the mats down, it would be because there's nothing else going on. Otherwise, we roll up every night, we clean the mats every single time we use them. I clean bathrooms, I make sure kids pick up after themselves, so it's not a mess in any way, so.
Well, you can see here, we have pickleballers that use this, and that late, usually late after, you know, early afternoon, and they're out, they wouldn't interfere with any time. And then, there is, there was at one time an exercise group-- I don't know if they're gonna come in this year or not. But every once in a while, you'll have something like that. But you can coordinate, everybody can coordinate with that calendar.
Planning and zoning will need in here for the auditorium.
Yep, and a lot of times, you go in the kitchen anyways. So. And if that room's all new, they can-- if we open that door, we'll have heat in there. It's so ugly, we keep the lint, everything down.
It'll look better. And I know that in the past, like, you know, groups have, you know, paid a fee or whatever to--
I think that would be, I think that is well worth it, just simply because it's your liability, then, that's part of the liability.
On the fee side?
Yep, if you pay a fee, then everything is your liability, not ours.
Yep.
I think that. Now, everybody, they don't think about what you need there, but what, have you paid any fees anywhere else?
We had a lease of Constance Schools, probably two years ago during COVID, 'cause we weren't able to be in the schools or anything at that time, 'cause we're not technically a school--
Right.
--activity. And for the whole year, we leased it for a thousand bucks. And that covered utilities, heat, everything, so.
And there would be a little extra, I suppose, with the commercial room shut, but that's pretty good, actually.
I'm gonna say a hundred dollars a month.
Three months.
Yeah, a hundred dollars a month, three months.
Would you--
That would be--
And if you don't need it for the whole year, why not just the three months?
And it would be, like I said, it'd be December, January, February, March, so it'd be four months.
Yes, four months.
We wouldn't be here all of March, most likely, 'cause our state is usually the second week in March, second, third week.
I'll make a motion to approve that, a hundred dollars a month.
I wanna put this caveat in, if there, if there becomes extra cleaning, that you guys could help with that, silverware.
Not a problem.
I don't think there will be, but every once in a while, this thing needs shined up or something, okay?
Not a problem.
Make the motion.
Make the motion to allow the wrestling, youth, to wrestle enough to the auditorium, a hundred dollars a month.
By putting it by the months, too, if you need some extra time, if you go into some extra innings at the end or something, and you want some extra, even a few?
Appreciate it.
Okay?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by James, second by Bob, to make the auditorium available to the youth wrestlers at a hundred dollars a month.
Do you have a key?
I'll sign one out whenever it's available.
We'll get one.
If you, if you want to type up a little lease or something, I'll sign it and I'll write you a check, so.
Yep, we'll do that.
Correct.
Is that appropriate, appropriate for everybody? Then we'll start the-- the vote with James.
Yep.
And Bob.
Yes.
And Larry.
Yes.
And Don.
Yes.
Okay. Then we, now, I just wanted to get that done, so you both could, you know, and, and we have, also, we have Ryan Lecker on there, but I just want to tell you quickly, Ryan came over today and went through the insurance coverages with our guys, and he's working on some things now for the medical and so forth, so we'll get back to you, since he was put together. The-- And then we have to open a public hearing, so. So, if we're, we're done with that part of it, let's move into the public hearings. So, at this time, which is, I think, about seven o'clock, 6:58, we will open the public hearing for the plantless due, for the Weeble House conditional. And you have one of those in your packet, people. This is, I talked, Joe called, talked to him yesterday or today, and he, if he had another meeting, then maybe he could make it tonight. I'm gonna let you go with this, Mike, if you want to explain anything or if they have any questions. Thanks, Pat.
Joe Weeble House already has his slots to sell from the state. What he needs from the city is permission to sell in his location. What he's looking at is about 10 slots to put cars. He plans to buy salvage or something of that nature to repair and market. What he's after is, like I said, 10, maximum of 10 options. He's got place in front to park three or four, and there's a rock area in the rear that will house quite a few, as far as that space is concerned. Roughly, those should be about 200 square feet parking per vehicle, and he's got that. It's in a commercial area, it isn't outlined for commercial use. That's not direct permitted where he's at, so that's the reason for the conditional use permit. And since it's the sort of business it is, we'd like for that to be able to continue. We've been putting 25 years on these things on a fairly regular basis for those meaningful businesses that we'd like to see continue, so if that meets your interest and we have other concerns, people feel free to voice your opinions.
Yes, this is, yes, that's what the public meeting is for, is for public to voice any concerns or ask any questions. It won't change his business at all, actually. It just gives him a permit so that he doesn't have to pay sales tax every time he buys a car and then turn around and refund him. That whole process is able to put merit out with that permit. Any questions? No questions from the public? Well, we'll close the public hearing then, okay? And that closes at whatever time it is, 7:02. Do you wanna, should we vote on this one? Yeah, let's vote on this one separately, then. You need to vote from the council, then, that approves that conditional.
Yeah, yeah, we have to approve that.
So, I get to have--
The council has to.
Make a motion to approve the conditional permit for Joe Kellin Weeble House to sell vehicles.
I'll second.
James, second by Bob. And the vote will go Bob--
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
And James.
Yes.
So, then we have another public hearing that we need to open, we'll do that at seven o'clock, so he will give that minute. And that is for the planning and zoning recommendation for Don and James. John, did you wanna deal with that one? And you should have in your packet that--
Yeah, I think I might mail this to you guys in September, too. It's for the northwest corner of Crofton, basically from Road 891 to Main Street, also near the east, or it's all on the east side of 121, about to Fourth Street, I'm sure. It was, so it'd be the north side, there's all lots along 121, and down to Main Street. And we already conducted the first public hearing, the planning and zoning yet, and answered everyone's questions, I think to their satisfaction. So, what we're doing is, we always, in our process, request that the board of the Justice for which is this city council also have a public hearing, so that's what we're doing tonight, so to get another chance for the public to give input on what we recommend as far as rezoning. The reason we're doing that is, for the last few years, we've been working on a new zoning map, because ours is 50 years old. And we did a section for Street. We felt the school bond might go through that would affect how we do the building permit to them, so we decided to do the whole section, you know, that didn't go through. And we'll probably do another section or two before we kind of finalize the map. That way, when the map's ready, we're not having the whole town at a, "Hey, we're zoning here and checking everybody's property," and all of it done, so. Tonight, all we would request is that we had the public hearing, we opened it for a public comment, we closed the public hearing, and then we just asked that you would vote that, yes, you're in agreement that planning and zoning is due to rezoning.
Due to rezoning. So, do we have, thank you, do you have anything hanging on, question? If everybody's got any.
Yeah.
And you've already had a public hearing, is that correct?
Yes.
So--
And Tracy was here for that.
Everybody has a question now? Now's your time, does question John throw away?
Yeah. Any questions, anyone?
We sent out a letter to all the people within reasonable distance of the concerns--
300 feet, yeah.
--and what would happen, as you had stated earlier.
That's a good point, too, Michael. So, when we do this, the steps are, we have to decide what we wanna do in planning and zoning, and then we have to agree on that. And then, we have to contact everyone within 300 feet of any zone, whether that's one parcel or a whole area, and let them know that the plan is to rezone that. And then, we schedule a public hearing. In the letter, we send to the, to the property owners when that public hearing would be, so they have an opportunity to come respond. And then, this is the second part of it, which we don't, I don't think necessarily we have to do it, but we just do it so that we make sure the public has all the options to have input. So, if there is no questions, then I'd say we can close it and take a little vote.
Okay, and we can close the meeting at seven, Bob. Okay, and we can close the meeting at seven, seven forty-five. And then, we would ask if anybody wants to make a motion to.
Could I have a comment?
Yes, yes.
Uh, and I think I said this earlier in more meetings, but, uh, this, for instance, the school is thinking about some alterations to their properties and improvements, and, uh, as the zoning was set up, in the past, there would have been some problems with them doing what they wanted to do according to the zoning regulations, so this, this is just common sense. This frees them to do where they are, what they need to do in the future, as well as does residents in addition to the school.
And I might comment that, from the, from this inception, when I first came on the board, this has been for six years. Everything I've read of the background or, you know, any of the meetings or anything, North Side Acres is basically the only way we have to go. There's, you know, there's no, if we're gonna have any additional, businesses, any additional, housing, any additional, anything, it's gonna be more.
It's really hard to go, let me just, to piggyback on it, it's hard to go east.
Yep.
There are complications in going south, although it's a possibility. Going west moves farm ground over there.
Right.
Possibility, uh, I don't know that anyone's anxious to be free of their farm ground over to the west.
Right, and the thing I always hear is the caveat of how much it would take to develop, that, the logical, I'm not a developer, so I don't know that for sure, but that's, and we, we own the land, so, it only makes sense to get it prepared for the future development, and we've got the infrastructure close at hand, et cetera. So, anyway, that's my two cents.
All the landlords, uh, that are affected are okay with this?
They've all been informed? Yes, sir, by mail. And a very complete analysis, I think we possibly have it in your file, even, an analysis, the same, that was sent to each landlord.
And you never got any back of protests?
You don't have your back tonight, but you, you do have this, I have, because our church is involved in that statement.
So, if we change this zoning, like right now, there's crops out there, does that affect that? Do you have to stay there until we decide, until they develop it?
And I might add, I would recommend that right soon it be annexed also.
What was that?
I said, I would recommend that right soon it be annexed also.
This is simply a future plan.
That's a future, yes.
This is simply a future plan, plans can be changed.
But the city owns it, makes sense for us not to be paying property tax and have it inside the city limits, and, uh, to get the, because that, when you increase your roads, that increases your money, money of the state, the whole thing. That's it, needs to be annexed.
My, do you got a question?
Sure is.
If I'm reading this right, if you look on your map, on the west side of Duella, and, uh, Fourth Street, there's that cul-de-sac right there, is that right?
That's, it's drawn, it's drawn in flat.
All right, so, if, say, somebody would want to put some kind of facility up there for, you know, let's say, daycare or something, would that be a hindrance, or can we do that in that spot?
I don't have it with me, and John, do you have to have your book with you?
What was the question?
I wanted to know if on the.
Come up here so we can hear each other.
On the cul-de-sac? First, pardon?
Let's say right here, let's say right here.
Okay.
If somebody were.
Still a couple, right?
Daycare center there.
Daycares are.
Medium density, it's medium density.
Okay, so it's not a problem, but.
Nope.
Although, see, it's yellow here, which is light.
It's medium density, so, yeah.
So, this is actually this thing color, this is all this.
Yeah, this, all yellow is medium.
Okay.
It's kind of hard to copy, the orange is low density.
Wow.
And then, these are commercial along.
Yeah, well, these are this color here, and this is the same.
And then, the pink is still stays agricultural transition.
So, that'd be this right here.
Yeah, medium density, it'd be yellow.
So, this one here, and this color, and this color are all the same?
Yep.
This one's different, this one. Kind of?
That's, that's also low density.
These are, these two here are the same.
Yeah, the only medium density is this yellow.
You got there, come here, and there.
Okay. Well, yours is probably a copy of the future. So, yeah, daycare, there's, in any district, there's allowed uses, so, anything in that allowed use, you can get a building permit for, and there shouldn't be any issues, as long as they apply to the, the right setbacks, and the heights, and the size, necessarily. And then, we're talking about with the car sales, in certain, in every district, you have a conditional use permit, meaning, they can still have it in that district, but it needs to be approved by the city council. And that gives you an opportunity to put requirements on it that you may think is necessary, based on what the location is, or what kind of business it is. You can, we, you can add additional conditions. And then, there's temporary uses, which usually is just for, like, construction buildings and things, whether built or something, or if they're doing, you know, um, farmers market or something like that, you know, so those are the three in every district. So, you can imagine, like, in residential, sure, you can have houses, and, and medium density, you can have multifamily homes, apartments. Um, but you can also have schools, churches, you can have public utility stuff, you know, fire department, and city maintenance, and that sort of thing, so. Um, but in commercial, of course, you can't have residents, so, that's where you have other, other options. And that's why we rezoned, so you can do certain things in certain areas. Sure, any more questions?
Have, did we close the public meeting? No.
So, no way for comment?
Any, any more from the public? Okay, we'll close the public part now of the meeting, uh, here, here, public hearing part at, um, seven fifteen. So, then, the council would, um, any comments, if, if you're satisfied, then if you would come up with a motion?
I'll make a motion to change the zoning ordinances as prepared by the Crofton Planning and Housing.
To accept that ordinance, or to accept that planning and zoning suggestion, is that what you call it?
Recommendation.
Recommendation, yep.
I'll second that.
So, recommended by Bob, I would be pushing, um.
Accepted.
Um, second by, by, to, to accept the, um, planning and zoning recommendation for the zoning emergency.
It's, it's the northwest area of Crofton, I mean, not, not just north side?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, north, yes, uh, um, yes, northwest area, because North Side Acres does not include some of it that is being changed, yes. Okay. Thank you, Mike. Anything else? Oh, did I call for a vote? Okay, so, let's start with, um, Don.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
And Larry.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, that clears out the public hearing, so we're down to the reports. Um, planning and zoning, do you have any more to say there? Um, Michael, do you want to do anything more with planning and zoning in your time?
We've had very few applications in the last month, uh, actually, in the last two months. I didn't bring my book with me tonight, but, uh, Rebecca, she'll pick her, her concrete, and she's got a hot tub, and all, and she's working on her vents, and a few of the things that's been processed and approved.
With the winner.
It's in the, it's, it's in the works, it's going forward. Other.
Because another one came in today, and they picked up one, I think they're gonna add something over on that Fourth Street, that they're starting.
Okay, I don't think I've seen that yet.
You haven't seen it yet, no?
Or is the application still? The others basically are, hers was a deck as well, um, they've been basically concrete, otherwise.
And I might add to that, if you don't mind, that we're in the process of sending all that to the county, because, and they, they pushed me a little bit about getting this over here, because they're in the process of bringing, you know, if you haven't got your new tax, um, evaluate, evaluations, they're gonna, they're trying to bring them all up to date. And she said, quite frankly, you know, that they hit different towns, different times, and they've been out taking pictures and making, you know, trying to make sure that everything's up to date, so they want those, the, there is a reason for these, because that's where they go, and, um, she had two or three numbers she thought was missing, I think we've got those straightened out, so we've been sending those over, so, um, that part's getting done.
Did Larry's book get a permit? Is that the only one that's actually active right now?
It's hard to, uh, I'd have to go get my book and look, as far as how many there are, there are probably three or four more that are active. Larry has a permit, yes, he's had permits since he began.
Who's that, what's he done with that?
Larry, adding onto his garage. Yep.
Yeah, there's, um, we don't always get notifications when they're done, but we know when they are, as a rule, so. And some of that's nice stuff going on. Is that it? Mike, thanks. John, did you want to say anything more on planning and zoning?
No, we meet everyone, and it's, it's open to the public, it's usually here the second Monday at lunch.
Okay.
And you can always just more out if anyone's ever interested.
Okay, you all heard that. Um, let's go to economic development, Dan, do you want to say anything?
No.
Okay, the cemetery board?
I'm gonna use it, should we do it in line?
Sure.
My name is Laura Crossley, and the cemetery board consists of myself, Vonda Lenny, Brenda Sage, Mindy Zabidell. And we worked on some, uh, kind of reorganization of some of the material at the cemetery. Um, so, our goals were to review the city documentation, the map of the cemetery and sections, the deeds, the list of those who were buried, year, birth, and death. And our goal was to update cemetery regulations and develop the directory. And our committee work, we compared the map to the cemetery by physical observation, we walked the cemetery. We tried to compare the deeds, but the files were incomplete. Um, the Knox County numerical index that we obtained copies of were illegible, for the most part, it's very, very faint, very tiny writing, and, um, so it was, uh, very hard to reconcile. Um, we also obtained input from city employees and Wynn's Funeral Home to, uh, get some recommendations. Some of the items we completed, we, uh, looked at the city of Crofton Cemetery regulations and provided recommendations, and we leave that to you. Um, the black writing in there are the, um, original twenty-ten regulations, and I apologize, I had provided a, or I thought I had provided a more up-to-date, there's some typos in here, so I'll get that, uh, rectified, but it's twenty-ten regulations. Um, the red writing were some of our recommendations, and then, the green writing is some of the recommendations from Wynn's Funeral Home, just some thoughts there, I'll go back to that. Um, we also, uh, updated the list of blocks and sections one through thirty with the list of owners and personal, uh, the list of persons buried, including birth and death year, and saved it in a binder and electronically, so I have this to give to the city office, excuse me. And then, um, we also did an updated list of persons buried in the Crofton Cemetery in alphabetical order with the location by block and lot for directory purposes. And we saved it in alphabetical order in the binder and also electronically, so that we can more easily update it. So, going back to the proposed cemetery regulations, just wanted to note that the current plot price is two hundred dollars for a twelve by twelve. And right now, those twelve by twelve plots, they divided in half, it's a twelve by six, and each, uh, half of the plot will fit one casket and one urn, or two urns on each side. So, that's what that's referring to in there. Um, it should be twelve by six, not twelve by four. And then, uh, Wynn's Funeral Home recommended that, uh, we increase the price to two fifty, and just in comparison to surrounding cemeteries. He also, uh, recommended an interim fee of one twenty-five, um, and that fee is, uh, for cemetery maintenance and care. And then, uh, also with the sales, we just thought there needed to be a little bit more clarification about how the process should work within the city office. And again, all of this stuff in red is just recommendations for you to review, and if you would like to take those on, that's something you can decide on yourselves. And then, uh, we just felt that clarification needed to be put in there for, uh, uh, removal of any artificial flowers, uh, or debris, and the fact that there's, uh, as far as refunds on the purchase of the plot, and how to transfer ownership in that case. And that is for your review, and if you have any questions for me, just let me know.
Thank you, and I, I, I've got to tell you a little big, long story about how these gals came to work on this. They're pickleballers, and I caught them all together. So, um, I really am appreciative, they've done a lot of work, and they, they walked the cemetery, and they got names, and they, you know, ran this down, and we looked at maps, and we threw maps away that were duplicates, and we, um, it's, it's, uh, but it's been enlightening, and, um, so, and we, you know, as, as we move forward, and people come in, and that's, you know, you just think of these things, but when you sit down with somebody who's lost a loved one, and they come in, and they're looking for that place, and you better have a clear head, you know, but, because they need a clear head, um, you know, well, I don't know, you can't do this, or, oh, I don't know, so, we think that's really important. These are filed at the sta, at the county, uh, they are a piece of property, and so, like, as Laura was saying, state law says that you can't just get a refund. That becomes a piece of property that they've tried to, and they arrange a sale, like having a house.
And there's some addresses within this that are based on old records.
Yep.
And, um, an example would be, you know, some of them are numbered one through twenty, some of them are numbered north, one through ten, south. of them are numbered north, one through ten, south, one through ten, and it just needs to be consistent.
Standardized.
And standardized.
Yep.
And, you know, everything is electronic now, I'm more than willing to
Yep.
Bring that over and transfer it on to your system and sit down with somebody and start that process over.
Yes.
Just whenever they're ready to take it on and, and I know-
And we've ordered the new, the new sales, the new certificates.
Okay.
So we have a supply of those now, so one stays here at the office, one goes to the county, and one is given to the person who buys the plot, the lot. And I had a gentleman come in and said, you know, that we found, I think this one backed away, but that what the county said he had was not what we had and what he had. So he came in with the actual certificate of what he bought and went out and found it, and now we know exactly where it is and we made all the adjustments and so forth. So those things are important because when people need those, it's not the time to be trying to clear that up.
So if there's a point where you need somebody to, you know, do that clarification, I think we do have a good framework.
Yes.
And-
Oh, you'll be there.
And I do think that, that there's something that needs to be, you know, completed going forward, we're hoping that we can hand it off to that next person.
Yep.
A little bit more smoothly, so.
And one of the things that kind of, we didn't get done, but I think would be awesome, if, if maybe this is something that charitable organizations would want to deal with a little bit too. I think, and many, many places have really nice directories that are glassed in and so forth, and they are perpetual so they can have things added to them, and many times they have a shelter over them. I remember a long, long time ago going to Aurora, Nebraska to find some relatives of a friend, and it was raining and it was miserable, and we walked in and they had this nice shelter, you could walk in and stay dry. It wasn't, you wasn't inside, but the rain wasn't on you, and here was all these glass files, you know, covered, that you could find, and the lots were, blocks were marked, they're on block so-and-so and so-and-so, and it was really nice, real excellent.
Well, and one thing that we also thought about is offering that directory with a QR code. If you're familiar with, it's an electronic code where you take a picture with your phone, it links you to a website, and it's always up to date, and if that would be something you would like to have included at the cemetery, it could be weatherproof and
Sure.
Could always be updated and be accessible to, you know, the future generation that comes along.
And they'll need it, but us old folks will never learn how to use it anyway, but, but yeah, that's something that went towards that future, isn't it?
Yes. All right. I'll make sure this is typed up and get you guys.
I really, really appreciate the work of all of you, Mindy, Brenda, Vonda's not here. Thank you all for the work you put in. Nothing from the tree board. Aaron, I think you guys worked recently with the tree board, right?
Yes, well, yes, the community club did.
Can you tell me what kind of, I don't know, a tree, one tree from another, can you tell me what was finally put in up there?
There was a type of oak, I believe, and a couple maples.
Okay.
But don't quote me on that.
Okay. I know that was-
They were, they were recommended by the Harding Tree.
Right. You should have heard all the conversations through the office in different places, since we ask people, but say, you know, "Oh, maple's absolutely beautiful," but then you got those darn roots sticking up, and "Oh, but the oak gets so, but it takes so long," you know, it's, you know, you get all those conversations.
I'm not, I'm not.
Well-
Does the city pay for grinding the stuff, or who?
Yes, yes, that was part of the deal when the wind came through, that they took the trees down.
And they all will be ground at some point?
Yes, yes.
I saw him grinding some of it.
Yeah, he called me and said they were headed over this way, and I kind of caught it last, but I don't know, I didn't see what they got down. He hasn't been in, so he usually stops in to say hello, so I don't think they're down.
So it's two maples toward the street.
Okay.
And the oak is set back closer to the bathroom.
Okay. I don't know, I, you know, our, our experience with oaks, they're tall, nice, big trees. I went to San Antonio to visit, and the yard was full of, and the whole area down around that lake down there was full of live oak. And they're, Jody's talking about live oak trees, live oak trees, and finally I said, "Now wait a minute, this sounds like that's actually the name of these." "Oh, yeah, yeah, that's their name." And I said, "Oh, I thought that was just a song." You know, about the old live oak, I just thought men of the alive, but that's actually one of the oaks. And they are, they are short and scrumpy and they don't look anything like our oats. So-
You gotta have an oak tree because you gotta have a place for a yellow ribbon.
Yes, exactly, exactly, that's what I had in mind. Okay, okay, that one's done, that one's done, that one's done. John, Chief Carter.
Duncan Center. Good evening, one, the law office is open tonight, I just wanted to let the council know that we got a call from the Kansas Highway Patrol. They have two vehicles that are, that, that we call a requested. As you know, I, I came to the council before to ask about vehicles, but under the circumstances with problems getting chips, a lot of police departments around the country are having problems getting even new vehicles, they get rolled back. So we got put on the list back at the end of June for two patrol vehicles, and they are now ready, and they come with, they are the 2020 vehicles, they're gonna leave all the equipment in the vehicles so we don't have to buy that, the lights, the sirens, all the gun locks, all that comes with the vehicle. The only thing they're doing is that they're taking their decals off, they're cleaning the vehicles up, they come with the maintenance records. The vehicles have about forty-nine thousand miles on them, but they've been kept in impeccable condition, and they come with the maintenance records. Now, both those vehicles, the cost with everything included is, is fifty-nine thousand two hundred dollars. Now, we have some money that's coming from the JAG grant through Lexington, but that money will not be available until later this month in November because the Crime Commission and PSAP and everybody else that was doing funding pushed their funding from October to November for some reason, I don't know. But on Wednesday, I have a call with a gentleman named Michael from Lexington, he is going to give us a letter of, you know, verifying what type of grant we're gonna give, what kind of money we can get. And the money for these vehicles, because when, when I did the budget, I didn't account for both these vehicles being at this cost, it'll be considered as a reimbursement to the general fund to the city, that part of it. But the rest of the money, and I was talking to the mayor about this, but the rest of the money as a part of the grant is still intended for the other things it's supposed to pay for, like, like the uniforms and ammunition and things for the police department. So it'll be designated for the police department for use, just like it would if anybody donated something, like for the pool, that money should be used for the pool, or if it's for whatever, you know, it's to be designated for that. But the fifty-nine thousand two hundred dollars can be considered as a reimbursement back to the city's general fund from the money that will be coming from Lexington.
We know how big that grant is, yeah?
The one that I applied for was, I think it was four hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Now, these vehicles are ready, so what, what the, what Kansas Highway Patrol wanted to know is, they, they gave us an option, we can go pick up these vehicles here in about a week to ten days, they'll be ready to be picked up. So we can bring a check for certified funds to pay when we pick the vehicles up, or we can do a, a purchase order, just give them a purchase order saying that, yeah, we're gonna receive the vehicles, we'll pay for them at a later date, they'll give us a, a time in the future that we can pay for it. But by that time, the information from the grant will be, you know, available anyway, so it, it'll be all done. So what I recommend, rather than to take the ve, take the check down there now, let's do a purchase order that'll give the grant time to get processed, we'll have the money anyway when we go pick up the vehicles. It'll be very, very close to it, it'll be a close exchange. The other thing about the vehicle we have right now, I've been trying not to pull the trigger to take that vehicle forward. I, I don't know if you know, but the vehicle that we have does not have heat or air conditioning in it, so like when it gets cold now, and, and, and Aubrey and I are driving around the vehicle, when it's thirty-six degrees in the morning, it's like twenty in that car. And for some reason around your feet when you're driving, that will not warm up at all, but there's no heating. The only way that the heat fan comes on, we have to drive at least sixty-five miles an hour, that's impossible to do in town. So what we have to do to warm the vehicle up, we have to get on highway one twenty-one or twelve and drive sixty-five miles an hour, four times, back and forth, to warm up the vehicle, and then when we get back to town, because we're driving twenty-five through town, the car cools off because the fan stops. And so it's, it's miserable, and for some reason, the battery doesn't last more than fifteen hours now because it's cold. So if we let that car, it used to be, it used to stay at least twenty-four hours, have to start the car and let it run every day. But now, I didn't leave last night until I went home at eleven fifteen after I closed the store. I came back out, you know, later today to start the car and the battery's dead. So it, so that battery is not even going past thirteen, fourteen hours, it barely makes to sixteen hours. So rather than to buy a battery, take the car to Ford, and have them to fix something that costs four hundred dollars and charge us fifteen hundred, I, I, I'd just rather spend the money on these vehicles. Because I took my truck to Ford, I took my personal pickup to Ford, and the part that they put on there cost four hundred and twenty-seven dollars, and the labor was fourteen hundred and eighty-five dollars in just labor. So I can imagine what they would do to fix that car. So the other thing is, we think we can get about thirteen or fourteen thousand dollars for that car, but they won't take the Crown Vic, but, but they'll take that at Ford, at Moody's, so that's, that'll offset some of this fifty-nine thousand dollars as well.
And there's ten thousand in the CD and set aside for that.
Yeah. So-
Motion to get the purchase order. I'll make a motion to get a purchase order.
Thank you.
Okay.
So James made a motion to get the purchase order, purchased two vehicles, I'll second.
I'll second.
Second by Don. So we'll start the vote with Bob.
Before we start it, did I hear that correctly, fifty-nine two for two vehicles or one?
Two. And, and that's, that's fifty-nine two for two
It's in your-
Vehicles.
Do you have-
You know, that are twenty-twenty's, and, and both vehicles come fully equipped, because the, the equipment in the vehicles alone costs right at thirty thousand dollars, just the equipment that comes in the vehicle.
So what have we got to do, buy some decals, is this crossing police, or the police, or what are we gonna do there?
Well-
Does it have a red flag on it?
Well, we can buy some type of ghost decals, or we can put a decal, we can put an emblem on it, that's up to us. Now, the reason that a lot of departments, small departments, don't put full decals on the cars, because like the decals on the car we have, those things cost eight hundred dollars just to put a decal on the side of the car. Or you can get a rack, right, yeah. Okay, does anybody have any other questions? I don't have anything else, there's some other things that we're working on, but I'll wait until later and write them up and submit them to the council.
This may not be in your packet, Don said he doesn't have one in his, but I have one that's listed, and they're, they both are Dodge Directo, one is a white and the other one is a billet color, I looked at that, that's kind of silver. They have TV, what, what is that, TVI bumper? Do you watch TV when you're driving down the road in the city?
No, no, that's a bumper.
Oh, that, oh, that's to get the, well, we need that in this country. And then there's the interior lights, of course, the siren systems, the gun locks, et cetera, as he said, and they've listed those all out, so the equipment itself adds up to twelve, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-five bucks.
Yeah.
So a couple grand of that is-
Right. And, and normally, these vehicles outfitted like this with this equipment, but including the decals that will be on them, most departments pay between sixty-three and seventy thousand dollars for a fully equipped out, outfitted car, because most of these vehicles just alone, they cost like forty, forty-two to forty-four thousand dollars, plus the equipment. So for us to be getting two of them at the fifty-nine two is a, is a pretty good deal.
So with your vote, we'll head him down there and pick up the car.
I want to go down and get one turn of sirens.
Yeah, so, uh-
You want to drive one home? No turning on sirens.
Yeah, the vehicles are down-
Is that in the Lions, did you tell me?
Well, they're, they're actually-
Oh, Topeka.
In Topeka is where we have to go pick them up.
That's just a hop, skip, and a jump.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John.
We need to vote, don't say thank you yet. Don't let us forget to vote. So we have, James made the motion, Don seconded it, and Bob?
Yeah.
Larry?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And James?
Yes.
So that's it, okay. What else?
Roofs in South Park.
Oh, we do have the unfinished business here. I talked with Jansen, and he was gonna get started over here on the roofs in South Park, but then, what was the deal? They said we hadn't voted on it?
We didn't see the estimate, we hadn't voted on it. Do we have estimates, James?
What happened to the estimate? He, he didn't send, he was there on my phone. He did, did he put them in?
He called me, he was gonna email to me, but
We didn't do it.
I never saw anything, so I didn't bring them in.
I think it's too late.
Oh, I don't know if it's too late, you know, we just had some seventy degree weather just a few days ago. I mean, are they, they're not leaking. I mean, really, but really, why they can't, what do you come next?
They can wash those, right?
Um, during time limit on that air, we'll be okay, but probably not.
I think we've already done-
Not, next year will be just fine.
Yeah. I think we've already done.
Well, do we, do they get, do we get paid in full on that, do you think?
I, I don't know, it doesn't take a lot of time to just get that seed money.
Yeah.
We get the depreciated value and tip for this, but I don't know, maybe help with this.
I was shaking your room today.
Did he?
I'm shaking my neighbor's roof today. It makes no difference to me, we waited a year, or waited-
I can get you the estimate, I, I know all about this.
We need a CD estimate before we approve that.
I'm sorry.
Nope.
I, I think it was one of them was-
Did you see the estimate?
No.
Well, see, because I had it here that night, and because, remember I said there was, one of them was seventeen and one was eighteen, there wasn't that much difference between asphalt and metal. So they should have been in that, but everything's gone from that meeting. Let's, can I? What else is on here?
You don't say something?
We'll go to sign these on checks.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, let's do that. I just want, so he can, he's got time, that's the problem.
Yeah.
She was ready, was it?
What was that?
If he wants to come in, because he was ready to go that day, he was kicking already to start.
I have no problem hiring him, I just think we should see the number before we approve it.
What was the cost? The cost, you know, what he's gonna charge us? Share that with us, that's just like anything else.
No, we didn't get two estimates because the second person didn't go over an estimate and Ryan technically had done it.
Okay.
Almost too late to start because they're not gonna see-
Yeah, so we were saying, not leaking, they're not hurting, they're not hurting anything, we saw that people prior to this all.
We're just trying to get it done, you know, but, so there was a mess out there, that's not an issue, definitely, anyway.
So we already, we already have a check for that amount, or we had to submit that bill to Ryan to get-
Ryan told me that we'd already been paid for it.
Okay.
Now, I don't know how much. Aaron, did you say that's usually like a, a, kind of an upfront, and then they add to it if they need to?
Well, I don't know the details of this claim.
Yeah.
With a lot of claims, they'll give you the depreciated value upfront, and then once you turn in the receipts to show that you did get replaced, you get the replacement made, the replacement cost. But I didn't look at this claim.
Yeah, and I didn't break that down because they paid us trees, they paid, they had everything in one check.
Yeah, so we should probably get those two questions answered, right?
Well, we'll-
Well, that one's irrelevant, I mean, we get the turn in, we get more money, we get more money. The big one is cost, compare the cost, compare to what the adjuster thought the damage was.
I think it was under.
Okay, it could be.
Because, well, actually, no, it was more because we're asking for three roofs and they only adjusted the bathroom, but they, they definitely did damage.
Oh, I see.
But the, the shelter, the shelter is rotted all the way through.
Right.
And, and if you're gonna make them, if you want them to look nice, you want them all masked and you can't get something.
Shelter wasn't damaged, shelter was.
So there won't be any payment on that shelter, and that's why Ryan said, if you can get this done for this cost, you better go for it. You know, because you're not gonna get any insurance on that, so. And I, I, I just went completely out of my mind, what mind I have.
No problem.
Okay, so let's look at um, let's look at the claims.
For the business.
Oh. The new business, we only have one item. Uh, we have to get our signees on, on the bank. Okay, they're getting very, very picky about this, it's like, who's your signees on all your checks? And then you have to list every checking and cap, you have to list everything, CD or anything that you might be doing anything with, bank balance, et cetera. It's not a bad deal, they got everybody, you know, it's just, it's just everybody's time consuming and, and they've been through it a couple of times and then oh, we didn't get this one in. Um, it's probably pretty obvious, there's a list in here of all the signees that are there, that have been there. Uh Donna, of course, is the newest one. Shelley, we kept there because we needed and, you know, as much as we could to keep as many things going as we could, although she wasn't available all the time, she agreed to do that.
So we can only have two?
No, that's not the problem, we just don't need anybody on there that's not gonna have them, we need to get people off that's not gonna sign. Arlene won't be back. Uh, you need, will be back. Right now, Shelley, there, we don't have any. Um, so right, for right now, I would suggest, because the bank wants us to take care of this, do we have to have a res- resolution or just about, did they say? And we have to do that.
Can I make, can I make a comment since obviously there's an election tomorrow? Should we hold off on this till next?
Well, that's what I was trying to do with the bank.
Cause obviously, I don't wanna remove you.
This is what I would like to do, James, but, but the bank keeps down us, but I'll keep waiting with the bank and I just leave her alone.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I'll just tell them.
I don't wanna remove you, but if I remove you, you know, I'd like to keep you on.
Let's get who's gonna be done.
Yeah. That makes sense.
I agree.
That makes sense.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, then let's look at the claims. And I'm just, you guys uh look down through, um, they're pretty common. Uh, you'll find the actual page on the, in the pre-pays, you'll find them up and down, you'll find them, um, you know. We've been doing the catch-ups of, um, for example, look at Great Plains. That four fifty is the estimate, they were behind a month. Black Hills somehow looked like they had about three checks, so that was a credit. And the Cedar Knox is okay. The rural water hits, we got hit two months because they crossed in the mail, we hadn't got it out. So then we just paid them both. In the MC insurance was two months, I believe. We had that whole month where we didn't have anybody in there daily to, and that's why this is pre-approved, it's that you can pay them if they come in. And if you don't have the two people there to sign them, they don't get them, so. So those are some catch-ups, I wanna move to the site where you have to approve, which is on your right hand or left hand, whichever way you're looking at it. Go down to, um, we have a new clerk who cat, who alphabetizes everything. You said it's alphabetical. So you will see right after Menard, you will see Midstates Engineering and Testing. I wanna tell you a story, this is the Midstates, I believe it's in there. This is the first company that we got to do the testing out on the pot land. We, we asked them to come in and we voted to have them come in and drill holes, et cetera, et cetera, and to do that, um, the engineering, blah, 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 uh testing to tell us what was out there. If you will look at that, I had them uh break this down because this is the one that we pulled out and didn't approve. So the, on January, they drilled the first two holes. Still in January, they have the um laboratory results. They did the professional evaluations in July and that was after the second drilling. They were in the field out there to do the drillings when they were told not to come or not to do that or whatever. And um Millers, I, and I called me and I said, do you need this? And they said, we need to find out if there's clay out there that we could, that's extended out into that land and that's what we'd ask them to do. I told them to go ahead with it, um, and that's the second drill. The total bill here is um on your sheet there at sixty-six eighty-one. That's for all of it. At the time that we asked for this to be done, we had not yet signed an option with the other piece of property and this was in line for doing business and I don't think we have any right to say we're not gonna pay them. So I'm asking that to be part of this um whole thing. It is added in on the right-hand column there. Also, there is CTS, which is Certified Testing, which is the second group that you had to come and do pots or to do the Gunther land. And I keep looking for their charges because they said they were gonna charge for laboratory stuff, but it's not on that original bill that I can read. It, the forty-four hundred is just for drilling holes, so I keep expecting something more to come, but it hasn't. They're not sending the bills to me, they've been sending them to Mr. Pyth and Mr. Heaven. So um if you wanna approve all these, we'll get those paid.
I just have one question.
Yes.
On the Visa bills on the bottom?
Yes.
Do every one of our employees have their own Visa card or do we pay them like that, or do you see the city Visa cards?
These are, these are Visa cards and they, they just, they are in their name so they know where they come from and they bring all their receipts and then we pay them. We used to pay them all at once and we decided to break them down. I, we should make an accounting, the guys, they, they almost have to have these cards because all of the samples and stuff that they send have to go through the mail, that's the only way they can get those out and so forth and so on. And then there's, we should never have gas on them, I noticed the other day that we have some gas, we should never have that. We buy our gas locally and put it on our charge account.
Right.
But you could have, um, like, I think, uh, I think Chief Carter's ordered some stuff like online. One of the things that Jonathan had set up was some, a cloud to take in some of our surveillance stuff and he, that was way out of reason. We kinda got some stuff, um, John was able to get that reduced, but I, and he may have paid, I, I don't, I think we just got a bill on that, didn't we, John? I think it's put that on a credit card.
Yeah, we did, but I paid some of it on a, on.
On that credit card to get them to hold off.
Yeah, because some of the bills came in because they were so, so far back because they were trying to negotiate. And so I, I just paid it on the car so they wouldn't send it out to.
Kind of been negotiating with them for like June, they wanted like five, ten, we got down to about two.
Okay, I was just curious.
So, and then the, the one, the office one, I did that, that's that new office chair that our clerk sits in. They were sitting on the floor and um Pat and I went to Yankton one day and we went out to, what is it, Slumberland? Was it one of a, no, my path, my, my son's path. And um he walked in, well, I was at the doctor's office and he went in and said, um, do you have office chairs? And the guy said, no, we don't carry those anymore. Well, he said I got one that somebody special ordered, but we put it together and everything, but they never did come and get it, so it's marked down. But it's already put together and I said, hmm, that's all right, so. So Pat came and got me after whatever and then we walked over and went in and they said, oh, too late, too late, we just sold it. So we got a, about a five hundred dollar chair for about a hundred and seventy-five or something, so that's on that credit card. That's, that, that's, we, we've had chairs breaking down all over in that office, so.
So does the maintenance have, let's say, three thousand dollars on their car?
No, there's a total on all.
Let me, let me finish.
Okay, I know you asked a question, you've asked it before.
Three, three thousand dollars on maintenance with their car, only on their budget. Three thousand on the city police and three thousand.
No, we've asked that question before, we have a total amount limit, so if one of them goes over.
Talk amongst each other though, then when they get stuff, cause the last time, somebody was over, couldn't do it because nobody.
Because there was an emergency that had, we put on there, we explained that, so we're not gonna take over it again. If you want more information, come to the office.
So yours isn't on here, that chair, not on?
Yep, visa, that, the office, I put it on the office.
Oh, okay.
And then we ordered not a bunch of envelopes and stamps, envelopes, and that's about five hundred. So. So that gets high when we, but they last about, one box of envelopes lasts about a month. Or, they'll do not quite, they'll do a little more than a month, okay? So three of them will do four months, probably.
How long's a envelope?
Yeah, so, um, I think, or five hundred, five hundred, five hundred envelope, in a box. I need you to know too, that soon, hopefully, in fact, we put it on the last water bills, but if anybody wants their bills, email to them, that's gonna save us some postage.
Yeah.
And we've started that, we, we're figuring, we figured out how to do that, haven't we, Don?
Yes.
So as long as it doesn't carry over some past bill that doesn't belong on there, we're gonna be fine. So, you know, just kinda spread the word, if people want an email instead of an envelope.
We didn't, we didn't put a notice or anything in the envelopes.
We did.
Oh, we did.
We put it on last month's bill.
Okay, great.
There's a message on that, it says if you want your, your bill to come by email, let us know, give us an email.
Great, great, great.
And so much of the time, you know what, they open those up and they throw them out and they come in and say, what do I owe? So, so really, they may not even read the bill. So I, I just think, I don't know about you guys, but I think that's gonna be cost-saving with us putting that much out to get stamped envelopes and besides the time it takes to fold, mail, et cetera. I don't want to be the one that says, let's take these by credit card and so forth, that's a whole nother setup and that's, you know. There's money involved there, this doesn't cost us anything, that's the thing. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to pay the bills.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills except for about, except for thirty-five hundred and thirty dollars to the midstate.
How did you figure the thirty-five thirty?
Cause I took the six twenty-two, eighteen hundred, five hundred and I go down to the bottom of the page and it's seven fourteen, uh, two hundred and seventy and nine sixty.
I don't know where you're getting those.
Look on the, look on the sheet here.
Yes, I'm looking at it.
Okay, look on the first, it says drilling.
It's the drilling.
Says drilling.
Yes.
The first two we approved.
Yes.
The first two have the laboratory dates of one twenty-one, one twenty-one and one twenty-one. You add those numbers, those two on top and those next three come up thirty-one fifty-one.
And so, and you have to add in the bottom one because that was.
That is on seven fourteen.
That's for all of them, sir.
It doesn't say, it doesn't say for all of them.
Well, you go back to the.
I'm sorry.
Okay, we do this in a minute. If you go back to the signed agreement that we did with them, they said do the laboratory work, that's the laboratory work.
That's that.
The only thing that you guys did not approve was the eighteen hundred and the five hundred at the top for the second drilling. When Millers called me, you guys had already made your phone call out and told him you weren't gonna pay them, it wasn't their bill. So he got concerned and called me and I said, do it, we have requested that that be tested, finish your job and I'll pay the damn thing if I have to myself. So that's exactly what happened. So the only thing you can take off of these are those two. And the, and the option was not signed with Gunther, if you will note, until August fifth. So at the time that was drilled, you didn't even know you had Gunther land. You hadn't even told us whose land you were looking at.
You, you're right, you're right, but we also weren't sure if, if we could get to this property at that time.
We didn't know about it, James, you wouldn't tell us who it was.
You're right about the Gunther property, we didn't have the Gunther property in our sites, but we also didn't know if the county, if Cedar County was gonna let us get access.
Over there?
Yeah.
Pretty much so, cause I've been to that meeting.
I know, I know, and, and we had some other councilman visit with them and, and but that day I did talk to Mike Stevens and Mike said, we do not have the okay.
And we were never gonna get it until we got the state.
I'm just, I'm just stating, I'm just explaining to you.
But this was all based on that pro pots like, or on the Gunther land.
True, that's how this all went down.
Tell me, can you tell me more about what the project engineer fee is and what the senior engineer fee is? What are, what are those specifically for? That's, that's Miller's part of it, or what is, what are those things for?
Well, remember when you brought in your CTA, you said, these guys are all engineers, that was your big selling point. They know how to test soil, that's the only thing I know.
So that's.
That makes them an engineer.
That's the reading of the samples, is that what?
That's what I would, yes.
All right, I will just take a second.
I agree with you totally, James, on that was a question, that was a question created right here.
Yeah, I, I'm just trying to explain to the.
And when, when they, when that, when that gentleman on that counting, like, said, we want the state to do this, we want this to do that. Basically, what the state told us was, we can't issue you anything till you apply for it and you can't apply till you get a plan together, so how can we assure that?
You're right.
But if you need the information, the base of judgment on, you need the information. And it's, the minute that we start second guessing our engineers, then we need to get different engineers.
The bill is in the bills for the other one, that's for the forty-four hundred dollars, that's.
I'm sorry?
I believe the bottom two are just for the testing. I mean, there's two engineers, senior engineer and a project engineer, I would imagine they, they both get, they all.
They came in after both of them had been collected to compare, that's what the whole thing is about.
I need that, that's just part of the, part of the process.
And I wouldn't be surprised if we get another bill from a, um, CTA.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure. I'm sure, but they're gonna, they're gonna be about.
They're not gonna test that one, I hope.
No, they're not, they're gonna, this one's sixty-six, that one's.
Like I said, you know, they, those, those bills came, they came coming.
Holden your motion, Larry.
Well, I'm gonna rescind that last one and I'll make a motion to pay the bills except for twenty-three hundred, the two extra drillings or whatever at that midstate. The rest will pay the midstate except for twenty-three hundred dollars.
You can die for no second, somebody else can make a motion, see how that goes.
What was that for?
I said that can die for no second and you can make another motion.
No, I, I just wanted to hear.
Make a motion to pay it all, which is honorable.
I just wanted to hear his motion, probably rescinding is the proper way to do it.
Why's that?
That's the Robert's Rules of Order, if you make a motion and, and nobody signs it, it shouldn't be rescinded.
I rescinded it, you said I rescinded it, and that's last motion.
You know, I, I think that is the correct Robert's.
No, but he's rescinding it because he wants to change the amount, he didn't, not.
I wanna change my mouth on a, on the bills.
Rescinding takes it back, but what I'm saying, it can die on the table for no luck.
Either way, it'll work, yeah, we've done it both ways here.
We don't, so I'm just asking if anybody would like to pay them all, that's, that's in simple words. If anybody has. I'll just say, honorability maybe to pick them. We owe the bill, that's all there is to it.
I'm gonna make a motion to pay the bills as is.
Motion by James to pay the bills as is and all of it, all the, everything on the bill, everything on the list.
Yes, sixty-six eighty-one, yes. I'll second.
Second by Don? Um, motion, or um, voting starts with Larry?
No.
Don?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Bob?
No.
Take, that's the tie vote, I get the tiebreaker and I say yes, this is it. I think we're ready to vote, John.
Make the motion to return.
Second by?
I'll second.
Bob? Vote, uh, Bob, Don?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
And Bob? And Bob?
Yes.
And Larry. We are adjourned.